So welcome to everyone here to Orchard View Elementary. It's kind of our newly renovated Orchard View Elementary. I call on the principal, Christina Mendoza, to come forward to provide tonight's official welcome. Mrs. Mendoza, great to see you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, good evening, members of our Board of Education, colleagues, families, students, and our community. We welcome you to Orchard View. I am both honored and humbled to serve as the principal. At Orchard View, we have a strong tradition of diversity and inclusiveness. Our mantra is written across our hearts and in our minds. Every kid, every day, together. This mantra defines our work, gives us purpose, and promotes a strong sense of belonging. Our population is very unique. One facet of Orchard View's space is our program for students with autism. I'd like to thank the district for its vision in placing the elementary model at Orchard View. I believe that our students foster a strong sense of acceptance because this program is an integral part of who we are. This evening, we'd like to highlight how literacy and our LINKS program nurtures all of our students as they learn about acceptance and empathy through Friendship Books. I have invited Sharon Bushy, our school social worker, to share this perfect partnership with you tonight. Sharon?
I'm honored to be here to represent the LINKS program. And I just have to say that it's not me alone. It's us, an entire staff of teachers and support people that work alongside me to make it happen year after year, and I couldn't do it without them. So thank you for giving me a few minutes to go ahead and talk about and highlight the LINKS program and something that we did last spring called Friendship Books. So just how big is LINKS? And to paint the picture, we have 147 students in 13 general education classrooms sign up to volunteer and be friends with 25 students who have autism or are in our categorical program. And so last year, we had 335, and the number just keeps growing. And I think that speaks volumes to the impact of what we're doing here even through COVID, that this program continues to grow and grow. You might ask yourself, what is LINKS? And so this slide next shows just a little bit of the highlights of what we do and how we foster what Christina was just talking about, inclusive and understanding and acceptance. At the beginning of the classroom and school year, I go into classrooms and talk about autism and what it is, and then how to be friends with someone with autism. They have, once they've signed up, they have weekly jobs that they get to do. They get to sit with them at lunch promoting and practicing conversation, appropriate table manners, how to be friends, and talk about fun things that kids like to do. They also get to come to a social language group that's run by the speech path myself, talking about all those social skills and communication, which we know are delayed when you have autism. And then they just include that when they come into the classroom, things just like greeting them, saying hi, and giving them the material that they need, partnering with them, just really making them feel like they're a part of the class. And that's really part of what we do here at Orchard View. We really want to make sure everyone feels a part of things. At mid-year time, we went and did a case conference and checked in and said, how is everything going for our kids? They got to talk some more and learn more about autism. And then at the end of the year, we do a celebration with a little treat, big treat, and the kids just seem to really love that to celebrate everything they're doing. But tonight, I really wanted to highlight our Friendship Books, which happened in April. We know that April is Autism Awareness Month. And so we were able to purchase the blue shirts that you might have saw tonight that the kids were wearing. Staff all have shirts as well. And so each Monday of the month, they got to wear those shirts and walk through the hallways and talk with their friends and promote and understand acceptance of autism. And then we kicked off our Friendship Books. And so I went in the classroom and I gave them a sentence starter. So this was during their writing time in class. I gave them a sentence starter. "I like being your friend because..." And they had to come up with something to write. And we worked through that literacy process of first start of brainstorming. What are we going to say? What do you guys know about these kids that you want to share with them? And then they went through the ideas of adding details, right? The teachers talk about that all the time in writing. So what details can we add there? Then they went and edited and revised their work. And then at the end, they added that art piece, that color and drawing and pictures. So we really used this Friendship Book to create and promote those friendships, but also work on that literacy piece in the writing. And so you're going to see some pictures here that these are students that were working on writing. And we took all of the pages and we combined them together to create a book that they presented then to their friends at the end of the year of celebration. And so some of the things I just wanted to highlight, and it was really neat for us to see a staff, just how well the kids knew them when they came up with those ideas. Oh, they love to dance with us in class. They make me smile. They make me laugh. That particular one they just saw there was colorful because the student with autism loves rainbows and loves to write his writing in bold and colors. And so they just connect in ways that sometimes a staff would just overlook it. It's like, oh gosh, they're really bonding and connecting as friends. And so that was just, again, some examples of the writing in the Friendship Books. The school knows that work that come out and highlighted this activity, and we celebrated that as well. And I just have a couple quotes that I want to read. When they were talking with a fourth grade student, he was quoted to say, "I told her that she's unique and she should never change." So those were the words of a fourth grader. And then when the reporter asked him that, what have you learned from being the LINKS? He said that autism is a part of her personality and that you have to be, sometimes you have to be patient with people who have autism. And so for us, that just out of the kids' mouths, the words that they said to show how much they understand and want to be part of things. So these are a few more pictures of just them sitting at lunch together, big smiles hanging out. Again, they're nonverbal, and they're trying to interact with them, finding other ways to do that, giving them a couple high fives. So that's great. And so the other thing is one that I'd like to, is just one of the feedback that we're getting from families and parents as well, that the kids that have autism are really using these books at home and looking through them over and over again. I think I had one mom come to me and she said, "It just brought me to tears." She was so touched by the fact that the kids in the first ones' classroom saw him for his strengths and the positives and not the struggles that he has in the room. So I know that the impact of autism program, the LINKS program here has, all spins is measurable, and I just can't wait to see where it goes from here. I think it's really neat. Thank you for giving me a few minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the helpful work and the work that your peers are doing and for the students that are doing this. I know that as a mom who has some of those keepsake books, that even maybe where it's just trying to make it for themselves, we keep those for everybody. I know these books will last for quite a long time for those families. So it's very keepsake on top of all the academic pieces that you're able to weave in.
All right. Are we having more to be thankful for?
We absolutely do. We'll keep it growing. We were so excited a couple weeks ago to gather as a community at our Forest Hills Public Schools Foundation Annual Gala. And in addition to raising all sorts of money for the foundation to help our teachers and staff across the district and work for doing students, it is a time where we honor a collaborative team of the year. And this was an outgrowth of our Teacher of the Year award that we have been giving for many decades. And several years ago, we said, you know, teaching is a challenging enough endeavor that teachers really constantly are always working together and leaning on one another and collaborating in different ways. So we said, let's recognize more than one. Let's recognize a whole collaborative team. And our collaborative teams of teachers all across the district, which there are clearly hundreds, it is great to call forth a team that is emblematic of the incredible selfless service that our teachers give day in, day out. So to help us introduce this year's team, I would like to introduce the principal at Central Middle School, Mr. John Haga. John will say a little bit about his team and then introduce the team members for us. Thank you, Ms. Haga. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, board. Yeah, a couple weeks ago, we had the honor and pleasure to go to Forest Hills Foundation Gala, if you have not, being able to watch the video that was created by Dr. Johnson, amazing video that highlights all the work that our instructional leadership team is doing to support every student every day. You know, it's a team of people, we'll introduce to you here in a second, who truly have the students as the North Star. They work tirelessly to look at the things that improve our students' experience at Central Middle School academically, socially, emotionally. Every part of their day, this team takes a look at and asks ourselves, how can we make sure that every student is seen, heard, and cared for? And so all the work they do has been recognized by the board, by the foundation board, by the Office of Instruction. I couldn't be more proud of the principal to welcome them here tonight to be recognized by the board and the community at Orchard. So I will, that's all I'll have to say. We'll all introduce them. We have Jeff Simon, he's the principal at Central Middle School. Aubrey Hardrick, one of our school counselors. Caitlin Young, an seventh grade ELA teacher. Roxanne Geller, an eighth grade and advanced math teacher. And Anne Rovitaller, who's an eighth grade ELA teacher. We have a couple more couldn't make it. Ann Hall is at the, what is the organ?
I don't know what he's saying.
Sorry. Ann Hall at the Orchestra Trip in New York and is at home with some children under the weather. But this team has done great things and will continue to do great things for all the Rangers, past, present, and future. So thank you for having us.
Thank you. We were, I think almost all of us were at the yell. So any chance we have to clap for you and your staff and any teachers, we will do. Any day of the week. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we are going to move into the business portion of our meeting, and I am looking for a motion to approve the consent grouping.
I approve consent grouping, items six, eight, and eight.
And do you have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Are there any items in the consent grouping that any board member would like to bring out for a special discussion? Okay, Superintendent Bean, how about you?
There's nothing tonight that I need to highlight. We have a number of routine items that I know our community shares for report on, as well as some exciting renovation projects. So I mean, it's important, and I know our board treasurer speaks to that as well.
Excellent. All right, let's move right into our community reports. Why don't we start with Principal?
All right. So our instructional highlight at curriculum last week was a presentation from Jan Van Arsdale, the district's director of Special Pet, and also Sarah Caster was there as well. They wanted to give us a report out on the Orton-Neillham approach that we are using in the district for specialized construction for their students who have been diagnosed with dyslexia. There has been a lot of information about dyslexia in the news in the last couple of years, and this is definitely something that schools are working to build more robust interventions for those students. So just a reminder, I looked up today in the MDE's handbook on dyslexia, just what it defines it as. So it's a specific reading disorder that is neurobiological in origin, characterized by difficulties with accurate or fluent word recognition and by poor spelling and decoding abilities. These difficulties typically result from a deficit in the phonological component of language that is often unexpected. And this is the piece where the Orton-Neillham training is crucial for these students. So it's unexpected in relation to other cognitive abilities, even though educators have provided effective classroom instruction. So additionally, this specific reading disorder may include secondary consequences like problems in reading comprehension and a reduced reading experience. So the Orton-Neillham method has seven specific approaches to help students with dyslexia. So it is multisensory. For example, they use a lot of standboards with their students to spell things out. Except multisensory piece, it's sequential, it's incremental, it's cumulative. So a lot of progress monitoring and making sure that schema is built before they are moving on to the next step. And so because of that, it's also very individualized. So three to five students in a small group at a time based on phonograms, and it's very explicit. So they do the same things with their students every Monday, the same things every Tuesday, the same theme every Wednesday. So it's a lot of repetition, a lot of pattern. Students know what to expect, and that helps with that comprehension, that processing piece. So the district has packets of specialized teachers who are currently going through the training. The goal is that all K-8 specialized teachers proceed this training. It is a five-day training, however, so it has to really be scheduled out when people can get that done. But the back of the teachers that have done it so far has been excellent. They love it. They appreciate the new ideas that they get from the social media channels that Orton provides. They see it as just an infusion of highly effective best practices, and they see how it will be beneficial to their dyslexic students as well as all the students that they work with. And then we also are going to do a reading review of some books for Northern Trails, and that is going to be Epic Fail, Art Choral Zamora by Pablo Cartaya, Muhammad Ali, The Greatest of All Time, Show Me History by James Buckley and Andy Duggan, and then another one called Sailing, Yipping, Great Universe by Carlos Hernandez. And the final review will be Spy School by Story Gift. And that was for you.
Excellent. Captive, as always. Any questions? Okay. With that, let's move to finance.
I want to say thank you for really detailing that out, and my son is dyslexic, and it's been challenged his entire career for schooling. So thanks for the work that we're doing there. I'm actually going to turn it over to CJ really quickly, because the finance team was lucky enough to do a little tour this week, and CJ is going to report out on that in short.
Yeah, sure, happy to. I'll try to be short. There's a lot that could be said about the finger seat, the kind of construction update. We were able to spend a lot, most of the morning and lunchtime at a couple of different schools through the district, looking at the fruits of our last bond and some of the construction updates that have been made, many of which we walked through today. Orchard View is one of our places to gain this brand. Genazium is part of laundry list of things that have been done here to enhance learning in just tons of ways. And there's, again, so many to name. A cool one that we really saw in action, those book nooks, or I don't know if there might be a better term that you guys use for that, I forget, that are kind of built into the walls with a pad in there. I mean, kids are just all over those things, reading and writing and working in groups even squeezing in there. So they really enjoy those little spaces, just a cool little touch. And the other thing I really struck me, essentially all the classrooms that were eight walls and doors before have been replaced with floor-to-ceiling windows, which really just expand classroom space, adds another level of safety and security with that visibility, more light in the rooms. And we saw classrooms doing group work and breakout work where they could utilize that space in the hall as additional classroom space essentially. And then they raise their hand out there, and the teacher can see them the whole time and come right out there and help. So just gives more room to expand and stretch out and then work together in groups or work alone. So a ton of cool updates. Also down at the Far High, we passed on your way in. I think the door was open, one of the group rooms for, the AST program uses a lot, the new occupational therapy and PT room down there. That looks as state-of-the-art as any medical facility that I've been in. So a huge plus for this program here, and for the non-AST students who moved into from that space as well. So just excellent to see again, as we continue and begin to think about the years ahead and the next project proposal, updates to be made elsewhere, to really see, you know, it come to life here for the students and staff at Orchard View. Very cool. The other place we visited was Northern High School. We got to see some of the updates that have been made to the lunch space, cafeteria space, the serving area. Had to talk to a lot of those folks in there. See some of the new displays, the electronic stuff that's been put in. They love the new equipment that has replaced some of their aged, you know, old machinery in there, and they just vacate immense pride of what they do, and it's a great operation that they have over there. So that was fun to take in lunch over there. We also have to see the new design wing, which if you haven't been in Forest Hills Northern High in a couple of years, you will, it looks unlike what you've ever seen in there. It's a pretty amazing space. And it's where we're on the master's house, we've got a boarding's house, new lavatory spaces, collaborative spaces, a lot of open areas, huge projects on display, kids just all over the floors and tables, you know, working together and solving problems. Had to talk to a lot of them as well, which is cool. So it was a great morning to ring some of the buildings and some of the construction projects.
And if anyone has a perspective on Northern, you do in there.
Yes. My locker is long demolished and it all doesn't exist anymore. Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Thank you, CJ. So I want to go to some action items. We need approval of the monthly bills. Just as a side note, right now, we're 33% through the financial year, fiscal year, and 19% through school. So if you see that on the statement as you're looking at it, that's because our financial year ends end of June, and the school year obviously starts about six weeks later. So the other updates that we have are an action item. Ada Vista, the renovation, we recommend all low bids, and these come from the 2021 and 2023 capital projects. The pine rust, or excuse me, pine renovation, we recommend all low bidders. Unfortunately, the one who came in as the low bidder did not have a complete bid, so we had to go with the second highest. Again, these come from our capital projects 2021 and 2023. At this time, it's also time for us to do a bond sale authorization. So we have a $29 million from our 2018 bond that we do need to prep in preparation to sell that with a market ups and downs. As a board, we need to approve that they can start looking at this, or that will look like the best time. When it comes to the best time, they'll bring it back to us and say, you know, this is what we're thinking. There's a lot of variables that go into that. Dan did a great job explaining to us all the players, all people that are involved to make sure our checks and balances are done when we're maximizing that bond. We also have our tax resolution. The annual required to do this resolution, two one taxes from the cities. For primary, it's 100% in July, and then A.D., P.S.K., and Grand Rapids Township are 50% in July. So we do this annually to have this approval. We also have a tax, corporate tax reimbursement of $114,250. And that is it. Any questions?
Excellent. All right. Then I guess at this point, if there are other questions, we will move to our poll vote to approve.
Mr. Mishon?
Yes.
Dr. Fawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Trine?
Miss Cavell, yes.
And?
Mrs. Callahan?
Yes.
What?
I mean, yes.
Okay. All right. With that, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Just one informational items. I have approved a resignation, and we thank the staff member who had been thinking about a career change but was able to remain with us while we were able to find a great person to come in and fill that role. For informational items.
All right. Then you can roll right in.
I will just move right into my superintendent's report. First of all, thank you to Orchard View Elementary for hosting us tonight. Every kid, every day, I see that all the time when I'm here, and all of the wonderful staff members and volunteers and parents and others who are here to help every child every single day. You see that, everyone working together, no matter the role built. Sharon Bushy, thank you so much for sharing with us the LINKS program tonight and all the great work that happens there for students, regardless of which program we're in, all here under the Orchard View of Man and I know they all benefit from that program. So thank you for all your work on that. And it's also great to be here at Orchard View, since the last time we were here, this space didn't even exist when we were here for a board meeting. And all the work that has taken place with our construction team and OAK and our architects, we went from a building that was the most crowded at the district meeting. We had the smallest amount of square footage per student. And that's one reason why we wanted to pack up this building, one of our oldest buildings in the fleet, first up in the 2018 bond. It was a 25-month project. And being able to provide, CJ, you spoke to that, more of that elbow room so that learning can take place in a variety of different areas and settings, and kids can spread out and we can work with different groups at different times and different ways. It's really made a huge difference. So thank you to the whole team. Thank you to the community for their patience, and the staff for their patience, and our students as well. It's great to see kids in here each and every day. It's a very exciting spot on that. So thanks again, Orchard View, for hosting us tonight. Just wanted to say a little, since last we met, that our community came forward on an election, and congratulations to Howie the Board and Mallory Neinmeyer for their election to the board. We are excited about that coming here in January, in January of 2023. Also, congratulations and thank you to everyone for the renewal of the recreation village for the district. We first passed that 20 years ago, about 20 years ago, in 2004. And this village is a shorter timeline by design, just so after 20 years, we can forget things. And people might forget what that village even is or what it's for. So hopefully with this tenure term, it's a little bit more frequent out there. But again, we appreciate the community's support for learning for all ages with our recreation village. Just also want to speak to an interesting little quirk in the law. So the Kent County Board of Candidates is working on the canvas of the November general election, and it's very possible, maybe even likely, that they will be done with that canvas and certify that election this week. When they do that, the county clerk's office will communicate to all candidates who want elections to offices across the county, including school board seats, informing them that they officially now are the winners of those seats. And then at that point in time, those candidates have 10 days in which to accept that office. Here's where it gets a little bit strange. In one of the seats that we have up for election is a seat that is the remaining years, remaining two years per month essentially, of Marty Atwater, who had stepped down last March from the board. And so CJ Mishon was appointed to that seat, but CJ didn't run for that seat. Instead, Mrs. Vaughn campaigned for that seat. And the unofficial results are in, and she has a highest votes. So we anticipate that county, when they do certify that election, she then, upon her acceptance of office, immediately takes office. That's where it's a little bit different than the other terms, say, Mrs. Gregory's, who will end on December 31st, and then a new candidate takes over on January 1st under the law there. But when a term is not yet fully ended, in the case of Mrs. Atwaters, and the board appoints, that appointment goes until the certification of the election in the acceptance of office of the new office holder. So when Mrs. Vaughn, assuming that she will accept that office, accepts, that then triggers her immediate resignation from a term that she is finishing up here December 31st, and that creates this weird little vacancy from, and let's just say, this happened on December 2nd, let's say, where you accepted office. At that point, you're automatically in the position for remaining two years and 28, 29 days for that seat. And then you resign the seat that you have, that you have 28 or 29 days remaining on. So at that point, we have a vacancy on the board. Mr. Mishon is elected to an office that begins January 1st. So he's out of that seat when Mrs. Vaughn accepts her position. Could be out of that seat for 28, 29 days in that example. So it's a weird little quirk from the law. The board has some options. You could leave that unfilled and be a six-person board. You could come together and decide to appoint someone. I would recommend that you temporarily, in this case, suspend the current bylaw you have on appointments, because that bylaw speaks to putting out an announcement to the whole community, so many days for that announcement, posting something in the newspapers, interviewing people. But like, by the time you go through all of that, it's going to be pretty close to Christmas, and then it would be like a six or seven day appointment, because that appointment is going to end on December 31st. So it's a little bit strange to do all that. So if the board... So if the Board so chose, you could suspend that bylaw and simply appoint someone for that time period. Mr. Mishon, in my mind, would make sense since the community is already, like, maybe looking out of that seat upon Mrs. Vaughn's acceptance of office. Or we could do nothing and just be a six-person Board, essentially for the month of December is what will probably be on that. So the Board has some options on that. It's a little weird quirk of the law. We didn't write the law. We just have to follow through on that piece of it. So I hope that makes sense. I did draw it out a few times, actually, to see how all these moving pieces work, but I'm happy to explain that to anyone at any point in time going forward. I have talked to our legal counsel about that, and they affirmed that what I've just explained here is indeed our options that we have in front of us for this program. I'd also like to express condolences for Val Clements, our official recording secretary for the Board, and the pastor for the father, and also our Director of Instructional Services, Kim DeHankford, our pastor for his son. Our thoughts and prayers are certainly with them and their families during this time. And I'd just simply like to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. We have a lot to be grateful for, a great team of educators and staff members who help kids every day, a great supportive community that supports our schools year in, year out. And thank you to all the members of the Board as well. And as we think of this time of the year and everything that we have to be grateful for, the list goes on. I would simply say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Wish everyone unhurried time, standing in presence. That's my report.
Thank you very much. And as I've been alongside you with all of that election conversation, you did an excellent job. I've summarized what we've been talking about, just to make sure we got it right. So thank you for that. All right, at this point, I will open it up for Board communication. So I will start on this side of the table and see if there's anything that anybody wants to bring up this evening. Okay, and how about over here?
Yeah. I have an algae foundation. Obviously, this is kind of like their Super Bowl month with, I don't know how to support an algae person, so. With their PTO, and they raised around $27,000, which is fantastic. And they still have a donation platform. Principals are going to be sharing that out with their PTOs and with their schools. So people, if they want to, they can, they can. Wait a minute, and I know that this week, Foundation working with the principals to make sure that those donation buttons on websites work, and people can donate up to their schools too if they would like to as well. So the Foundation is just very thankful for everyone that came out. They're thankful for the PTOs who purchased tables and tickets and supported their schools in the district, and whole to all the families who came out, business partners who came out, community members, just everybody that came for that evening. And again, like I said, working with the school principals to make sure that those donation buttons are up for people who didn't get a chance to donate and they can still like to do that. They are very congratulatory to the collaborative teacher team of the year. You can also see that video on the Foundation's website and the Foundation's social media if you did not. You can see that video that celebrates that instructional team. Also, they have a new promotional video called Future Full of Hope, and it is also on the Foundation's website and social media if you would like to look at that video. And that highlights some of the recent grant recipients from the Foundation and how the Foundation is making an impact in the classrooms of those grant recipients and then giving that into classrooms. So they also want to make sure that people know the next grant cycle, which is kind of the big one, that's going to open up right after the New Year. So when teachers get back after break, they can start applying for those grants. And information on how to do that for teachers is on the Foundation website. And additionally, the final thing, the Foundation is hosting another Power of the PTO event, which they call PAP. They are really working hard to create a collaborative effort between the PTOs and the Foundation, that they are a team. They had an excellent event last spring that I was able to attend, and then they're having another one in December. And it's really just a great time for PTO members to come together and share ideas, fundraising ideas, school spirit ideas. It's amazing that PTO think that they have these great ideas, that they've done them forever, and they are great ideas, and that the trajectory of school has been doing a completely different for a decade. And it's just really, I also think, and certainly a great educational opportunity and a great intentional space for those PTOs to come together. So yeah, that is the Foundation this month.
Excellent. Any other more communications? I have a couple things. I guess the one thing that I wasn't big enough until that was I know Mary and I over the years had the chance to connect with some of the PTOs or booster groups across the high schools. It's a few other years we have. But it is great, especially when you talk about been there, done that, and having the best practices and collaborating across the community is really powerful. So wonderful updates on that. And then I will, did you have something?
I did.
Oh, okay. No, no, no. Okay.
Well, I just wondered if somebody else was willing to bring this up, and I thought I'd just let the community know that over half the Board attended the NASV, NASV, which is Michigan Association of School Board Summit in Traverse City the first weekend of October. And so Mrs. Vaughn, Mrs. Tryon, Dr. Fosson, and myself, we took certification classes while we were up there and networked with Board of Education members and superintendents from all around the state and brought all kinds of great information back home to share with the rest of the Board. So I just wanted to update the community on that.
Excellent. Yes, that is, when you talk about collaborating across the PTOs, anytime you can be with your peers in Lake districts or in different districts, you learn from that, which I think goes to the one final thing I wanted to bring up, and I brought the visual aid, because this is so amazing. Look how big this is. So this is the cover, it says new Board Member onboarding. I would say this is great stuff for any Board Member. I would like to thank Val specifically for pulling all of this together, because she has brought the best of her work in our district, as well as her long tenure in other districts before. She really pulled the pieces of this together, but this has come from the work we've done starting from in general, we've had before. But what we're talking about in the summer, we said we need to, we knew we were having Board Members, we wanted to make sure that we had a great way to onboard people onto this. So this really is everything you need to know about being on board, in addition to the informal discussions that we always have when we welcome people into the team here at the table, as well as the resources within the district. As fascinating as the financial report is from Julie, that is in here and more. So people will get a jumpstart on it. So I guess my huge thanks to Val for this. But secondly, there's another piece in here that we worked collaboratively on, but Dr. Fosson took the lead on, and that was documenting some of the Board norms, which I would say that there's rules, there's laws, there's this is what you have to do, but this documented the way we do business and the way we interact with each other and trying to get that all in one spot. So again, it wasn't done all alone. It was through resources from NASV and then our collaborative work and the years of experience that we have here, that we worked together to make sure that the new Board is successful with the tradition. I mean, there's the fingerprints of Chip Burjbacker and all the years of people that have gone before us stand formally, but then it's all in here. So I'm very proud of this work that we did all together and thank you after us and Val specifically for their work. So this will be welcoming our new Board Members in January.
So Suzanne, I just had to say that, obviously, I know who Mrs. Callahan is, but what had actually happened was I turned over there and I saw that new Board Member onboarding thing, and it, like, literally distracted me. Because I thought this was so amazing. You talked about this for a while.
And you can never see her.
It really, I looked over there and I was like, oh. But yes, that is amazing. And congrats to Val, I wish she was here so that she could hear that gratitude and praise.
All right, so those were all the comments I had. So at that point, at this point, we will move over to the public comments portion of our meeting. So at this time, we welcome members from the community to come up and address the Board. And I believe, normally we have a copy of the Board policy on this, but we would ask people to come up and state their name and limit their comments to three minutes. And I would like to open it up. What we've been doing over the past year or so is opening it up to students first, if there are students here, followed by any staff members that are here, and then we'll open it to the community at large. So if there are any students that would like to speak, we welcome them first. And if not, and if there are any staff members, then give them a second, and then that will move over to community. If there's anybody that would like to address the Board, now is the time. Thanks.
My name is Stadi Moon. I live at 2205 North Point Drive in Ada. And just want to thank Ms. Mendoza for inviting us here, welcoming us to OB. This is the school that I attended as a child, so it's awesome to be in these walls here. Back in 1981, when Mr. Anis was my principal, I just can't say that I remember that the focus, the mantra, as Ms. Mendoza says, is diversity and inclusive, inclusivity and equity and focus on all the special interest groups. I can't say I remember that. And I actually asked my parents the same question this past week. I said, is that what we focused on when I went to Orchard View? And they said, no, because those things come naturally when you lead by example. You don't have to advertise that. You don't have to market those words to the community. You lead by example, and then everyone feels welcome. And I think that's the piece we're missing, we've been missing. If we just lead by example and stop trying so hard to make all these special interest groups feel welcome, because in the process, we're pushing a lot of other people, a lot of good people, out the door. And if we could somehow get back to the basics of just education, academics, and help everyone feel welcome, it could really go a long way. I've had some really awesome, I'm very thankful for some clarifying conversations these past few weeks with Dan, Maggie, CJ, Scott Hade, Mary. We've had awesome conversations, and I'm looking forward to productive conversations, that we can actually work toward some of the things that we've been talking about, making change together, listening to the parents, listening to the community, listening to the students, and working together toward that. And I just want to wish you all happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
My name is Douglas Dela Benita. I'm speaking here today as a representative of this community that believes public education is a place of emphasis on academics and effectively teaching kids how to read, write, do math, teaching civics without political, and building academic and social emotional strength and body experiences instead of government programs or debates. We want Forest Hills to get back to academic excellence. In recent months, Superintendent Bean has stated that Forest Hills District Roman is declining because parents are not having the babies. He states to the school board and taxpayers that academic declines are not as bad as others in districts in the state, where he compares Forest Hills District to Eastside Initiative. Why then compare Forest Hills academically to East Grand Rapids? That's what we used to do in years past. Wondering what you would find. Especially to showcase positive third grader results, yet a measurement of school discipline should be to the academic achievement of core curriculums of 11th and 12th graders. That's our op-ed. I write in my conclusions through the state testing data at mischooldata.org. I challenge you to compare data from the testing scores instead of third-party aggregators. Numbers don't lie. From the school data collected from mischooldata.org, we can draw factual conclusions of why student enrollment is decreasing. Resident students enroll elsewhere, is the term the state uses. That's home and private school, by the way. And the decline of academic testing results in math, reading, and writing, but science has been eliminated. Ignoring these issues only wrongs the problem. Asking questions. Is there another reason of declining enrollment because of parents having less babies? Where does MI School Data get its numbers from? Does COVID-19 have to be the excuse prior to 2020? When you a school board acknowledge that the actual world is not what has been presented by Superintendent Bean and administration assistant superintendents, then changes can be made to develop our kids to get Forest Hills back to the academic excellence we used to have. Thank you.
Hello, Gail Shulung. And I came last month to my first meeting, and I was quite impressed, and I was also astounded at the same time. And a young, like, man from your junior higher high school spoke and asked you the question about why you have a rule on dress code, but you don't enforce it. And I don't know how that's classified with you as a Board. I don't know what you're doing about that. But I did check with my granddaughter. She came over two weeks ago for dinner, and she says, Grandma, I got a question. I said, John, what's that? Grandma, in my school, we have a dress code, but people aren't mining it, they aren't doing it. She said, I'm doing it, but a lot aren't. And there's been nothing done about these people that aren't doing the dress code. She says, is that right? Is that the way it is when you make a rule? You don't have to enforce it? I come to you to ask an answer. Can you please answer that question? What do I tell my granddaughter as to why they have a rule and you are blatantly not enforcing it? Do you have an answer for me that I can share with her, please?
We just take public comments. We will have closing remarks afterwards. I just want to make sure, since you weren't here before, we don't respond very well.
Oh, you're not?
Yeah.
You don't know the answer?
We heard at the end.
You don't know the answer? Because I'm.
We do, we do. We just, you have three minutes to share your comments.
I'll share, I'll share as soon as we're done with.
Oh, I've shared, because I'm Doug founder, and I have no idea how to explain that. There's rules, and we don't have to mind them. We don't have to abide by them. So, and I also wondered, a lot of people talked last month about books in the library. I'd like to know what's being done about that. Very brave concern, three people got up and spoke of that, and I'm wondering what's being done about that. I don't know how the Board, they work, so I guess I'm explaining that and telling you I don't understand that. So those are my two questions to the fine folks. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aldrin from Jack. I live at 6639 Fort Howard Drive in Alto, Michigan. I am the King County 21st District Commissioner Aladdah. I'm here in an unofficial capacity tonight, representing the constituents of Cascadebound and Cali Townships. I've been asked and invited to attend school board meetings in both Cali and Forest Hills School Board to become familiar with issues family have brought to my attention regarding objectionable books, CRT, DEP. regarding objection to books, CRT, DEI, mask mandates, rental rights, murals, VAC mandates, sex and gender ideology, gender dysphoria, indoctrination, transgender medical treatments, sex and gender reassignment surgeries, gender identity, gender-affirming care, puberty blockers, hormone-altering drugs, to mention a few of the issues they have brought to my attention, all of which will be magnified by the passing of a legal procedure. What happened to the basis of teaching reading, writing, and arithmetic, which schools seem to have deprioritized with the advent of sexual dysphoria? It seems schools now believe they have to become the outpatient clinics for crime arrest, as evidenced by the Forest Hills School hiring more so-called counselors to deal with sexual dysphoria. I came to last month's Forest Hills School Board meeting, and I was appalled by what I heard. When an unannounced attendee read aloud a book called Push, found on the Forest Hills bookshelves, I couldn't believe my ears. To me, the solution seemed simple. You take the list of 400 books on the shelves and remove them, and tell parents to go to the King County Library or buy them online. I think it's interesting that the Forest Hills School Board and school boards across the nation would go to such great lengths to accommodate a very small, woke minority group in the public school system. Take note, you have a very vocal and serious parental rights group here in this audience tonight, and they are growing in numbers and are not going away. Will you bend over backwards to accommodate their concerns and listen to their plea to stop this indoctrination in our public schools? Or will you continue to implement the strategies of the MEA and NEA? I will be attending to these meetings to monitor the actions of the Forest Hills School Board and the Caladonia School Boards. The voices of the parents regarding parental rights will be front and center in this issue, and I hope the school boards are listening and willing to change this dangerous course of experimentation with our children's lives going forward. Thank you.
I'm at 2715 Cockriff Drive. I don't have prepared statement, and I don't need three minutes, but I just wanted to say thank you to the board for having your meeting here today at Orchard View. This is my home school. I'm not from this area, not from the Midwest. My husband and I went here six years ago specifically sought out to be in Orchard View attendance boundary. We have one student who's now in sixth grade at Eastern, so he's down here. We have two daughters here, and I'm just really grateful for the community, for Mrs. Mendoza. I do believe that the mantra that they use here is representative of what I'm looking for in public education for my students. And my children can read, they can write, they can do math, and they're also growing up to be people that I'm proud of, and that is partially due to the community we have here at Orchard View. And we're very grateful for that. Thanks.
I'm excited with Fidel. I live on Skarbo Drive in Ada. I was one of the candidates in the recent election for the two-year term, and I want to make a few public observations from the campaign trail. First, thank you very much for supporting me, supporting your candidates. It's a lot of fun. One of the things I heard consistently in listening to parents is the need to raise the visibility and emphasize the value of non-college post-graduation path paths, such as vocational education. Our college placement rate is probably prime, although I see efforts to also emphasize a non-college path, for example, the recent Forest Hills Foundation deal. It's not getting through sufficiently the broader community, because I keep, I was hearing this on the campaign trail. Second, I must count how many teachers and other staff raised issues about the district's human resources office. There's a perception that the office is not interested in the concerns of the employees. Are some teachers afraid to speak to the human resources office for fear of retaliation? And there's an impression that there's too much deference to that office. One of the outcomes of the focus on school board elections this year is that the public is paying closer attention to the work of teachers, the incredible work they do in this district, and their compensation. I think there's going to be incredible push for higher teacher salaries next year, and some of our teachers may be tempted to leave the district. To retain our best teachers, we need a human resources office that is functionable, and that is not an impression at all. My third point is to observe that the winners of our elections this month and several other representatives are people that have extensive experience in the school community, such as balancing our work on PTOs with Project Charlie or with our sports teams. This work in our district reflects the words of President John Kennedy in one of his speeches, "To do our duty undeterred by fanatics or friends." I want to congratulate Mary and CJ Mallory and Colin. I think the district is improving this.
My name is Jared Chekabowski, and my family has lived at White Hills for all 35 years now. So here we are, Thanksgiving Day a few days away. So what am I thankful for? Glad you asked. Well, at the top of my list, it is the amazing group of parents and grandparents with whom I am proud and humbled to be aligned with. They are and will continue to be dedicated, truly dedicated to improving our schools, and unselfishly committed to ensuring students are just educated and not molded into yet another compliant cog in the woke collective of today's government school system. And I am thankful that I still have some hope that there just may be some members of this board with some measure of independent intellectual integrity, and that some of the points, the truths that we have tried to share with you have piqued your interest, perhaps awakening a voice inside your head and heart. And then you have at least begun to begin to question the system of process and the groupthink biases rife at all levels and covert corners of education. Last month, I came to a startling realization. Oh my God, I am old enough to be the father of every one of you up there, from Dan and Mary to CJ. And so 50 years ago, when I was in college, perhaps with your parents, I was on the bleeding edge of higher education's higher indoctrination. I was forced to, testing, testing, I was forced to the most post-modernism, modernism nonsense of Marcuse and Chomsky and other extremist anti-American accolades of job doing, the founding father of modern American public schools, and a devout atheist and lover of communist government education. A future does not know it as well, and for decades, too many of you have been immersed in, naively swimming in a sea of condition. It is time for a sea change. If you are truly committed to the betterment of students and education, please educate yourselves, connect all the dots. In closing, I'd like to thank Superintendent Bean for his awful last month to speak with anyone, anytime, about their concerns. However, for such conversations, dialogue, to have real worth, they need to be honest, open, public, and on record. And perhaps, one way or another, the new year will bring in a new era of such communication with the board, and for that, we would give thanks. Enjoy the holiday with those you love. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we will move into the closing remarks portion. I think there might be a couple things you want to discuss.
Sure, absolutely. Thanks to our community, thanks for your comments tonight. And again, as I said, happy to meet with community members at any point in time. Also, as I've been talking with some of our members of our board and some of our community, we're looking to host broader dialogues. As I've said before, these are business meetings of the board, and what I really get a sense of is that people want to have dialogue on a variety of these topics and things. One of the things that I noticed is a divergence with the climate and culture survey of our parents who've got kids in school. And at the elementary level, I can hate the different inventories, but it's 95% and above of parents who are satisfied with what their kids are learning, satisfied with the teaching that's taking place. That drops off to 92% or so at the middle school. Just trying to remember, high school, it's around 90% on those pieces. But we can post all of that, talk about those things. But I also get the sense of people that don't currently have kids in school, that there's a different sentiment about that. So we love to pull people together, a variety of stakeholders, parents, educators, others, have dialogue on a variety of these things. These schools don't belong to me. The members of the Board of Education are elected by the community at different points in time. These board members get to know one another by the fact of being in the board, but they don't know one another before that point in time. They come to this, what I've seen in my career as superintendent, working with dozens and dozens of board members, is board members come with a desire to serve and a desire to help kids and a desire to help kids find and follow their dreams. I've seen that over and over. That is a common thread that I've seen through, members of the Board of Education that are hired by the community and hired by the community at different points in time over a long arc. As I think about every student, every day, the motto here at Orchard View, as I also think about that piece of specifically being clear about focusing on diversity inclusion, is that we're all different, and what we're not trying to do is to make everyone the same. What we're trying to do is to say, it's great that we're all different. It's great that we have different viewpoints about different things. And how do we continue to do that and not try to morph everyone into be the same? Not to say Doug Dewey, or excuse me, Mr. Dewey is supposed to bring everyone the same thing. That's not what we're trying to do by celebrating diversity. There's a diversity of thought that we want to celebrate, not a commonality that we're trying to indoctrinate in kids. No, instead, what we're trying to do is provide students with the building blocks to learn anything they want to learn to go out into their life and advocate for them. And I think you see that in our graduates. You see that in our graduates that advocate in all sorts of different ways, in all different areas of the economy, with all sorts of different viewpoints as well. We want to celebrate that. And also here at Orchard View, what we didn't do 30 years ago, 40 years ago, 50 years ago, is we didn't bring kids with special needs right up to the front of the school. We cloistered them off into separate institutions altogether, and that was wrong. So what we're focusing on is to say, we can include everyone. We can bring everyone to the table. And that's the first act in learning. If you want a child to learn something, they first have to know that they're welcome here and that people care about them. If they're not cared for, they don't feel that sense. The part of the brain responsible for learning is shut off. Instead, the part of the brain that's responsible for safety, am I going to be safe in this space? That ancient part of our brain that keeps us alive, that's the part that's active. So what we want to make sure that we're doing is saying, everyone's welcome here. It doesn't mean that everything goes. We have rules, and we have expectations, and we teach kids that all the time. And I would welcome anyone who's questioning, to come on into our schools. Come on into this school and see what it is that's going on. See what our teachers are doing. See that work they're gonna make up, because that's what our parents are seeing. If you haven't seen that in a while, and you're thinking that what we're up to is teaching kids the 1/100, the 1% of books that have adult content in them, that I don't want my kids to read, but if you think that that's what's winning today, that's not. And we just need to be clear about that as we go forward. So we want to welcome everyone. We've got nothing to hide, there's incredible work that's taking place with kids and with a big group of people that are collaborating every single day. About academic excellence, we can always improve. As one of our speakers said last month, we shouldn't be comparing ourselves to other districts, we should be comparing ourselves to ourselves. And it seems like that speaker this month said, we should be comparing ourselves to other districts. Well, we do both. We compare ourselves to ourselves and other districts, just to see where things are and what can we learn from other places as well. In looking at our comparison to ourselves, if we look at one test, the state of Michigan test that have been given, we're at the second highest level of achievement last spring since that test has been given in our district. The only other higher time is the first year that that test was given. And we're close, I think we'll go past that this year on that piece. So that's good. As we look at the 549 traditional school districts in Michigan, we're in the top eight or top nine traditional school districts on that, and we always want to get better. But it's about our kids' learning. And as I said before, not everything that's measured on those tests encapsulates all the gifts that our kids have and all the things that they're learning. One of the things that I hear from employers over and over and over is that kids need to have more experience with a variety of skills. Again, our kids can talk to you about the square root of negative one being the imaginary number, and they can explain all of that. They can go through that. But what I hear from employers is, I don't need kids to know that. But that's fine. In fact, we had a big group of employers in who said, I don't need you to concentrate as much on spelling. I haven't disagreed, I think spelling's an important thing, but they said, hey, we've got ways that kids can figure that out, spend more time on other areas where they're practicing different skills. So those are things that we're engaging, we're having robust conversations. Again, these aren't secret decisions. These are things that people are talking about, that we engage the entire community in to have these discussions and conversations. I constantly see our schools as a combination of things that have evolved since the beginning of passing on knowledge and skills of a human beings, and the new things that we are evolving and iterating on year after year after year. So there's some enduring traditions that hold true over millennia, and then there's some things that we have new understandings on, and so a lot of those things that we're doing all the time. Dress code enforcement, I meet with students every month as part of the Student Advisory Council. It's interesting, what they're saying to me is you're being too harsh on dress code enforcement. And, but we do have rules in place. It's important that we're modeling for students what the expectations are for different types of settings. The expectation for an academic or learning setting is one way, the expectation for a professional work setting is gonna be a different way. The expectation for an outdoors date semifinal football game on Saturday, which is only gonna be a different setting. And we're teaching kids all of those things, as we're working our way through. One of the jobs of kids is to see, do you mean what you said? And to push the button. That's, I consider a job description of kids. They're gonna push the button and see, do you really mean that rule? And at times, we will say, yeah, we really mean that. On dress code, sometimes some of the issues go back and forth with those of us who aren't as knowledgeable about trends and fashion and the like. And so sometimes what we do is we say, I'm not even gonna wade into that and say something. Then others will say, hey, let me have the conversation with you about appropriateness associated. But I can assure you, these are things that our students are recording, that they're hearing more and more about than they ever have before. We will continue to work with our students, work with our administrators, work with all of our teachers and staff members to create a learning experience and to keep students... of our teachers and staff members to create a learning experience and to keep students engaged. It is never a good thing to have rules and then not enforcing them. That kids realize that that's a system where you do not mean what you say, it doesn't build trust. We have environments in our schools where, if you think about it, we bring more people together under certain amounts of square footage than any other sector of the daily space out there in the community or the economy. These are the most densely populated spaces that we have in our communities. And so when we bring lots of people together, we have to have all sorts of rules of how we're going to treat one another and how we're going to deal along. And we work with our students on that at preschool and bring that through all the way forward. In fact, that's another piece that we're continuing to work on to make sure we've got common language and common understanding on those expectations all the way through. But even when we have that, kids will still do their part of the job description and they'll push the boundary from time to time. And we'll let them know where that line is and when we need to have them. I just had a conversation with my daughter, who's 10, tonight about that. She didn't want to take a coat to her school art show that's going on right now. And her mother said, no, you can't take a coat, no, I don't want. And I said, hey, well, when mom gets in the direction, you follow that. And then she said, well, you don't like it. And I said, it's a 10-year-old's going to have that conversation. But I didn't sort of push back and say, you don't like, you know, it's just a country. I didn't like it, wouldn't say anything at all on that and just let you figure it out the hard way to drum. And sometimes we do that tough love approach as well, but in this case, it was following up with the direction. And we do the same thing with our kids, day in and day out. Don't believe me about that. Talk to our teachers, talk to our bus drivers, talk to our support staff, talk to the folks who help us on the playgrounds and lunchrooms every day. In terms of books and collaboration, that's come up quite a bit and we've heard about that. The first I heard about that was 19 months ago in a release from a government affairs person that said, every school district in the country that voted for President Trump in 2016, but voted for President Biden in 2020, you're going to get hit on the issue of books. We said, why? What does that have to do with who people voted for? And they said, well, there's a series of issues these school districts are prepared to get hit with. And this is a national campaign to drive fear in the people who used to have kids in school and no longer do have kids in school, but to sell to them that the schools have gone to Hades and handbags. And it's on issues of CRT. And I said, what is CRT? I had no idea, 19 months ago, I had no idea. CRT, indoctrination, LGBTQ issues, folks in classrooms. And sure enough, school districts across the country have seen all of that. I would say to our Commissioner La Guiche, please come into our schools, come see what we do each day in our schools. You're not going to see that stuff. You're not going to see that. But I realize that the trust bank account may be very low on that, but come on in. I'm happy to show you, I'm happy just to have you spend a day with teachers on it. And you'll see what they do. You'll actually spread it with a principal, whoever you'd like, but please come into our schools. We have not hired sexual dysphoria counselors. We do not, I have no idea what the strategies of the MEA and NEA are. I don't meet with MEA or NEA leaders. I've never been to an MEA or an NEA conference in my 30 years as an educator. So that's not our, that's not in our tradition. We have a great relationship with our Teachers Association. They do great work in representing their members, but they don't come and say, here's exactly the thought product from the MEA and the NEA, and without thinking it, we need to adapt the same. I've never had that experience ever in my 17 years as superintendent here or in my 22 years as superintendent. So I'd be happy to have you come in. On books and libraries, back to that issue, I know it's something that's come up quite a bit. This board does not make decisions over the quarter of a million books that have gone into our libraries over the decades. You do see here, our curriculum chair, talking about the books that teachers want to teach in the classroom. And those books are presented to our curriculum committee and are reviewed very carefully and we announce them at each meeting. We have a 30-day review, anyone can talk about those and speak with any of us, speak with our board, curriculum committee, our instruction office, whatever it may be on that. We have had books that have been read and selected passages of that, just as the government affairs person said would happen, indeed has happened at many of our meetings. I would, and it's possible to do a couple of books. One, that's not something that I want my own children, two, their ages 10 and 12, my daughters, to be reading. That's what we've done, is we've said, okay, how do we bring parents into the mix? How do we collaborate with parents so that we aren't surprising parents as to what curriculum materials their children are viewing and seeing and working through at a time? So one of the things that our teachers do frequently, in fact, if I hear anything from parents is, oh my gosh, I've got to get another communication from my child's teacher of what's going on, they get quite a few of those. And we want to make sure that there aren't surprises that are happening there and saying, hey, we're going to start a new unit on nonfiction or persuasive writing or whatever it may be. Or, hey, in our US history class, we are studying World War II, so we're going to show this 30-minute segment of the movie Saving Private Ryan. We're going to do it next Tuesday and it's going to be this 30-minute clip. And this is an R E D, and this is something that you do not want your child to see, let us know, we can come up with an alternate assignment, no problem, we just want to collaborate. So I said, how do we take that same thing with some of our books that we have? And so I spoke last night about a book that was published 50 years ago, The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison. It's one of a variety of different works. It's been on our shelves for over 25 years. We've never tried in a classroom with a teacher teaching it, but it's been on the shelf in Media Center. It certainly has passages and words in it that are very adult. I know it's been taught at the freshman English class at Calvary University. When I looked, I said, why don't we have that on our shelves? It was because it was on the Advanced Placement Literature Reading List for the Advanced Placement English at U. So we had it there in case students wanted to check that out. And it's been checked out less than the number of times I can comment on hand until we talk about them. That is a huge rush to check them out, I'll say that. But what we did is we said, you know what, let's put a piece that we do with the Saving Private Ryan type of film in our reform. Let's just say, you need an parent sign off to check that book out. It's got adult material in it. What this board cannot do under the law is say, we don't like this book titled here, get rid of it. That's a violation of the First Amendment, the Supreme Court has held, of the United States, because it's considered viewpoint discrimination, that a body can come together and say, well, we just don't like it, get rid of it. You have to have a process. So we do have processes for looking at those things. Again, I was trying to find a way to compare the number of books that we're talking about. You know, out of the quarter of a million plus books that we have, this is a very, very, very small number. But still, we want to be clear of what those are. So again, in the event that, one of the things that we're trying to do more is actually get students to read and actually go to the library, even though these are less than 1/100th of 1% of the books that would be there. You sort of have to win the lottery to find those particular books on that. We're still looking to say, what's in these books? How did these books come to us? And understanding those processes. And then again, if parents have projections, to have a process in place that we can work through those. I can tell you, the vast majority of instances, where that gets worked through is when parents have a concern or question about curriculum material, whatever it may be, the first step is to talk to the teacher. And the vast, vast, vast majority of times, that's where it's successful. Parents and teachers have the conversation and they realize if there is a concern or a question or a clarified misunderstanding, that often times can be the case, and they work through that. So we want to continue to encourage that type of collaboration. If there are people that say, hey, here's a book that seems to be readily accessible with adult content to kids that are far too young for that, we absolutely will listen. We put a process in place to handle all of those things. I would just point to our seriousness about this, because what you can find on these things is way more than what you're going to find on our numbers. And what I see is parents handing these out like mints at the after-dinner line to the restaurants. And one of the reasons, as a school district, one of the few school districts in the country that have tried to put some constraints on these devices and work with students around digital literacy, like, and also provide tools to parents on how we can filter adult content from these type of devices. So parents don't have to constantly be thinking and wondering about what the kids, we've held community forums on that and how-to events on that. We'll continue to do that type of work. So we hear you about your concerns, we want to partner with you on that, but we also don't want to have groups just on their own making some decision about what things someone likes or doesn't like or appropriate or not appropriate. We think that's a larger conversation and we also want to be transparent with all of our families about those things, so they can weigh in on that as well. I absolutely agree. We need to raise the multiple pathways that exist for kids to continue learning beyond homeschool. We have overworn the pathway that says, move right onto a four-year college or university. I think there are many pathways. I think there's a couple of things that I like to encourage with kids, is that wherever you go, don't stop learning. Learning is really important and there are many ways and places that you can learn. I learned more mathematics building diseables and doing compound minor cuts with a custom deck builder during my summers in college than I ever learned in regular math class. Incredible stuff with it. So I am a firm believer in what we do at the earliest ages of education, where we do not take three-year-olds and say, sit down in a seat, we're going to tell you a bunch of stuff. Instead, we take three-year-olds and we put them in an immersive environment and they learn by doing. Well, we do the same thing at all different ages on that. If we were all here tonight for lessons on something I've never really done before, yoga, we wouldn't really do it by just sitting in a chair and having the instructor just talk to us and maybe show a few slides or a video about yoga. They never actually attempt it. So I think much more of our instructional time that kids have is like the fine arts. They're actually doing the thing that they're learning. They're actually playing the piano or strumming the guitar or playing the violin, whatever they do. They're using the tools that the adults in the field use and they're getting more and more time to build towards that expertise. And what we see is that there are a variety of non-college-bound pathways that have incredible growth potential, that have a lot of need. I don't know how we digitize being a plumber or electrician. Try finding one right now to come and service that girl. These are great professions. And I argued with the state of Michigan on this, it's when we went back and we mandated all kids take the same 18 courses in high school, or the same 18 credits in high school, that I think we poured gasoline on this problem and made it so much worse. And I continue to talk about that. And in my conversations with students, students continue to believe that the only pathway to success is to the most competitive colleges they can find. And too many students still have this mindset and that anything less than that is a failure. And we're trying to say, no, there are many different pathways, to the point where we are bringing in speakers every single month, multiple, multiple, multiple speakers of people from our community to come in and say, here's what I do for a living and here's how I got to the point that I'm in. Because what most of these speakers show is that it's not a straight line and it wasn't a straight staircase of the ladder of success. There were a variety of fitful starts and stops in your career, there were setbacks, there were all sorts of things that people learned by starting on the ground floor, by starting in the mailroom. One of my first jobs besides going on and painting houses was working in the mailroom. There's a lot of things you learned out of it. And so we're trying to have more voices from our community come in and talk for students about these things and the multiple pathways that there are to being a successful human being. So I agree with that very much. Also inserting the profile of our Human Resources Office, this is the reason why we do a climate and culture survey with our students, our families and our staff members. So we have that information as well, that's information that I've been working on. One of the challenges we have in the district and also in our Human Resources area is sometimes when there are things that are not easy. We're in a spot where the people in that office or the district or administrators are bound by confidentiality of what they can't talk about, what they can't say, and there's situations that can arise where not all the information is out there, when some people think all the information is out there. But regardless, still, that feedback is very important. And what we need more than anything else is to say to every single staffer, that we need you, that you are valued. I've talked about before, I see our biggest crisis, and I've been seeing it for some time, is that we're not going to have enough people to fill the positions that are going to become vacated in all of the different areas that we have in a public school district. We've seen the impact of not having our bus drivers, that's become very apparent. But right now, we don't have enough people to take care of our buildings. These are huge, important assets with complex systems. And if you see a custodian, if you see a cleaner, I see the head of our custodial group in the room tonight, who I can tell you puts more into that role and knows more about the complexities of our building and has a heart bigger than this gym for kids and the work that he does. But you're right, you're not paid enough. That's an issue we have for all of the job categories that are folks working on the front lines in our schools. And I've been talking about that for 15 years probably. And I'm glad that a lot of people are seeing, hey, wait a second. What are we doing economically to attract people to these positions? But it's also a respect piece that comes into this. It's a respect for the people that do all of these different jobs. You're not just a fill-in-the-blank. These are mission-critical people that are needed to help our students find and follow whatever their dreams are. Not that our dreams are for kids, but what their own dreams are for themselves. So again, I appreciate everyone's passion about making our schools better. I think that's something that we can all agree on, that we want great schools for our kids. I'm convinced that the things that unite us around that are so overwhelmingly in common. It's sometimes, it's either in the how or it's the perception of the how. And that's around the perception of the how. Well, I would invite anyone to come in. Believe it or not, we have teachers and staff members that stand the political continuum. I've worked in my 22 years as a superintendent with Board of Education members who stand the political continuum. But those things are really relevant when it comes to helping a kid figure out how to multiply divided fractions, or how to write a persuasive essay, or how to read. That's not a partisan affair. And what we're trying to do, what we're always trying to do, is to build good, strong, independent thinkers. It's not groupthink, it's just the opposite of that. It's strong, good, independent thinkers who can stand on their own two feet, who can gather information and data and evidence and make conclusions on it. That's what we're trying to do over and over. We are not perfect. I make mistakes all the time, but we're just looking for people to come together and say, let's put together a collective. One of the things I do is that when adults are on the same page, kids thrive. When adults are not on the same page, kids get confused and we don't make much progress. So even though we may have a polarized world in cases, I'm convinced that when you come to these national spaces of schools, you see adults from all walks of life, from all belief systems, from all political continuum, coming together and agreeing on, here's one of these good pieces and that's wonderful, and cheering them on. I see it day in and day out. And again, if that's something that you haven't seen, you're wondering about that, please come by and visit our schools, we'll be happy to open them. Those are my closing comments.
Thank you Superintendent Lee. And you did. And you're a winner. Your turn.